Welcome, everybody. This is Monticello's. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ashley, could you lead us, please?
Sure.
Ashley is truly honored by the United States of America.
While I have you standing, the board would like to have a moment of silence. A community member, Elaine Williams, passed away on September thirteenth. Our condolences go out to her family and loved ones. I know she's she's not from Monticello. She didn't start off in Monticello, but she's been a part of the community for many years. So we'd like to extend our condolences to her family with a moment of silence. Thank you so much. All three sides here electronic devices. As soon as you fit. I would also, on that note, like to point out to anybody watching on the YouTube channel at home that the board attended can be followed on board docs by going to the website, Word of Education, on the right side menu. Click on Meetings and Second Dendons, and you should be able to find us there relatively easily. Swearing in of student board member. We have two new board members joining us this year. We have two student board members, Michael Feldman and I know we're gonna mess it up, Bianca Walletta. They're gonna swap back and forth, and they're gonna sit on the board as our student board members. So I don't have a swearing gift, though. Do you have an oath? Sorry, bear with us. Yes. Michael, just come over here quickly, please.
And that's you should say that there. Raise your right hand. I, Michael Feldman, just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the board trustees on the Board of Education for the Monticello Central School District July first, 2022, through June twenty two, June thirty of 2023, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. Yeah. You wouldn't mind? Raise your hand, please.
I, Leon Alada, just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, my Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board trustee on the Board of Education for the Monticello Central School District July first, 2022, through June thirty of 2023, according to the best of my ability.
Right. Motion to move the agenda to the table. Paid by Todd Broden, seconded by Janet Bowles. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you so much. Dr. Evans, additions, deletions, and corrections to the agenda?
There are none at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Motion to adopt the agenda. Paid by Adriana Greco, seconded by Wendy Galligan. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Motion to approve the minutes of September eighth, 2022, made by Linka Rivera, seconded by Todd Broden. Any discussion? All in favor? So ordered. Mr. Feldman, student board member update.
So we are approaching the end of our first spirit week for the 2022-2023 school year in the high school. Seen a lot of participation by all of the students in Monticello High School. We've also seen a lot more support for all of our own games that we had throughout the week. A lot of the students are also adjusting very well to the new 200. There's still a few more things that we're getting used to, but everyone so far is all good anyway.
Thank you very much, Mr. Feld. So now we're going to have a presentation for Super Eval by Mr. Hartz. Mr. Hartz, how do you do?
Anywhere here? Or how about over here?
Yeah, sure. So you need to get on the or to show the video?
Yes, if you talk to Janet or what's screened on the screen?
Oh. Janet's speaking.
Okay. So just to, you know, to introduce Mr. Hartz and Super Eval. Super Eval is performance software that houses the various rubrics that are commonly used in superintendent evaluations across New York State. Most notably, as it relates to this Board of Education and me, it holds the NISBA rubric, which is the rubric that the board uses in my evaluation. So as a software tool, I don't want to steal any of Mr. Hartz's thunder. It really serves as a kind of a common point where I can upload evidence and, you know, statements regarding my work and my performance, and it allows the board members to not only view that, but also enter their feedback without needing to see it as a board. And you can have those discussions electronically, and then the rubric can be issued and finalized to be eventually at the end of the school year. So I'll turn this over to Mr. Hartz, the Bob, and he's gonna get something set up here in a second. It is a fairly common tool that's used around New York State. I think there's probably more superintendents than not, or at least the ones I spoke with that do use Super Eval. And this kind of springs from session. I think it was Ms. Rivera and I attended back at school schools where there were some superintendents there, and I was there as well talking about Super Eval and some of the other later applications with it that, you know, should the board elect to go forward with it, that I think would be of good use for the district. So I'll take you anywhere thunder away.
Dr. Evans, thank you very much for your time. Board President Crumley, appreciate the time. And all of board members, thank you very much. And to all of you, I'm gonna make this as concise as possible. This is a reintroduction of Super Eval to Monticello. But really, what this is, it's a platform that helps streamline and digitize and self-reflective evidence-based process. Makes it easier for Dr. Evans to help upload evidence within the context of the goals and what's being measured this year, part of his evaluation, to help inform you as board members how he's meeting those goals effectively. Makes it easier for you as board members to partake in the process, to offer feedback to Dr. Evans. With one click of the button, all of the feedback comments are correlated and contextualized within the framework of what's being measured this year. One click of the button, a proposed final evaluation is automatically created. You can make edits afterwards. And then the time saving, time savings, and the whole process just leads to deeper, richer, more meaningful conversations about district initiatives. What can we celebrate? And where do we need to focus our attention this year? I have a very short video that outlines the five-step process. It's up on the screen here. I think we're ready to go. Roll it. Okay, so.
Just to breathe that.
I'm gonna stop and start along the way.
Super Eval is a new way to conduct annual superintendent evaluations online, saving valuable time for superintendents and school board members. Super Eval creates unique roles for superintendents, school board members, and board presidents, allowing users to access only the information they need to complete evaluations based on standards of excellence. In just five easy steps, Super Eval defines a reflective and evidence-based evaluation process. The Super Eval dashboard drives the evaluation process, displaying easy access to the five essential steps, completion statuses for each step, and due dates that are defined by the leadership team.
So step one is just setting, putting in the annual goals and what's gonna be measured this school year. I will say this, and please keep this in mind. Super Eval is very valuable tool. How do you want the process to play out? Here at Monticello, it can be replicated in Super Eval. So meaning, if you just want the superintendent's evaluation on the annual goals, it can just be on the annual goals. If you also, if you want it just on the rubric, you can do it on the rubric. You don't have to do the entire rubric. You can pick and choose competencies within the rubric. You can do a combination of the two. But step one is just, once you've come up with what is going to be measured this school year, step one is just putting in the goals.
The evaluation process begins with the superintendent and school board defining annual SMART goals derived from longer-term district goals. These annual superintendent goals align with the performance evaluation. Superintendents can enter custom goals or select from an example list of goals used by superintendents across the state. Once goals have been populated, superintendents can mark step one complete.
So step two is the superintendent's self-evaluation. This is the opportunity for Dr. Evans to throughout the school year, put in reflection notes and comments within the context of the goals and the competencies if you choose to use competencies. Again, helping to inform you as board members how he's meeting those goals effectively. Let's face it, you have lives outside of being board members, although the last couple of years, you probably wouldn't think that. But again, this helps Dr. Evans to upload evidence within the context of his goals. Again, to help inform you as board members. So here's step two.
Step two requires superintendents to reflect on each of the leadership competencies or professional practices defined by an agreed-upon evaluation rubric. Throughout the school year, superintendents can supplement their self-reflection by adding supporting evidence to their portfolios with drag-and-drop functionality. The annual goals defined in step one will auto-populate in the last domain. Once reflections are complete for each competency and supporting evidence is attached, the superintendent digitally submits his or her self-evaluation to the school board for review, triggering an email notification to all board members.
So step three, this is where each of you as individual board members would go into Super Eval. You take a look at diagrams, evidence, and comments around those goals. You would write down the rubric and then offer feedback to the superintendent.
In step three, the school board reviews the superintendent's self-evaluation, including the reflections and evidence before conducting their own evaluations. School board members have the option to start a new blank evaluation or an evaluation that is automatically pre-populated with the superintendent's rubric responses. Each of the competencies has a rubric identifying four levels of a superintendent's performance with descriptors for each level. Board members can also easily reference the superintendent's self-evaluation reflections and evidence. The board president can conduct his or her own evaluation as well as have a real-time, high-level data view of how the evaluation is progressing. This allows the board president to lead the board through the process. Once all board evaluations have been completed, the board president can mark step three complete.
So with step four, with one click of the button, question. With one click of the button, all of those comments have been correlated, contextualized within the framework of the evaluation instrument. All of those ratings have been averaged. This is where in step four, you come together as a board and create a proposed final evaluation. How do you want Dr. Evans to see the feedback? So that could be individual comments with names, individual comments with names of faculty, summary of those comments. How do you want Dr. Evans to see the feedback? This is where you make those edits in step four.
Super Eval automatically consolidates all of the school board's evaluation data into a single evaluation, saving time for the board president by eliminating the need to manually collect this data. The board will then need to review the consolidated evaluations, make any adjustments necessary, and prepare the final evaluation for the superintendent's review. This process is closed to the superintendent. Once step four is completed by the school board, it triggers an email through the superintendent permitting access to step five.
So once you submit from step four to step five, Dr. Evans would get an email notification. This leaves him time to digest the evaluation, come to the next board meeting with any questions or comments about the evaluation. In step five, you have a discussion. Then digital signatures are put on to finalize the evaluation. Get a digitally archived issue of evaluation. Summary page, they can go to a personnel file, and then it'll start the next school year cycle all over where you're putting in goals for next school year in steps one A and one B.
Super Eval compares the school board and superintendent evaluations to present a data view that identifies areas of agreement and disagreement, providing an excellent catalyst for discussion. Superintendents have the option to add post-evaluation reflections and comments. At the conclusion of these five steps, the superintendent and school board president apply digital signatures to finalize the evaluation. Once the document is signed, the evaluation is finalized, and Super Eval generates a FOIL version of the superintendent's evaluation that can be used in response to any FOIL request. The evaluation is then stored in a digital archive that can be accessed at any time. Get the tool that's vital to maintaining and helping an efficient leadership team. Super convenient, super efficient, Super Eval.
That's Super Eval. Any questions at all about what you saw?
Four questions. I didn't see it in there, but is there anything that says the the information that Dr. Evans gets is from, say, the administrators? So when you look at the evidence, is he asking his administrators to get them reviewed? Or is that?
Then we do have. So Dr. Evans can use this to help. Started with superintendent before, but we've exchanged events. So now we have the board self-evaluation to the superintendent's essential office administrators, directors, supervisors, down to building principals and assistant principals, as well as support staff. So you're talking about that cascading alignment of goals when you have your district's vision and mission, district initiatives, big rocks, and that cascading alignment of goals from those district goals to the board, to the superintendent, to the central office administrators. So if you get everybody running in the same direction, you're more likely to meet people.
I think to answer your question, Ashley, I would, I mean, I would be gathering different forms of evidence throughout the year and just kind of dropping them in here to or archiving them and leaving them there for the board's reference. But it's not, no one is asked to evaluate me except for the board. Any other questions?
How much do you request?
It is both usable. So that's always, I always start off with that. That's good. There's no real seater. It's 2025 for the platform fee. That it's all board members and account, superintendent account, one evaluation, which is usually the superintendent's evaluation of the district clerk and executive assistant role comes with that as well. One time started a fee of $395. It's onboarding sessions as well as, you know, the account setup and whatnot.
Is there a contract?
The contract is the purchase order.
Yes, it's through OC, so that would be a co-service. But I would not enter that unless you're already board monitor. And if there's a need for support, then you go and call.
Yeah, so, I mean, you know, hopefully, it's intuitive enough. You know, we're making a very simplistic view to a very complicated process. But if you do need help, we have a, you know, help section with a 1-800 number that gets you a live person on our help desk. We have live chat. We have a help desk email. We can do an onboarding session with the board like I'm doing here tonight. We can do it Zoom or in-person, whatever the case may be. But yeah, I mean, it's not a drive-by, drop-off type of situation. You want to make sure that it's being utilized and utilized.
Any other questions?
Question that here.
I'm sorry.
How long have you been doing this for?
So we, 2015 is where we went to a conference. This is conference. So 2015, 2016 was a pilot year. 2016 and 2017, 2015, this was China. And now we're.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate you coming by.
President Crumley, everybody, thank you, Dr. Evans. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming out. I guess, you know, so I have direction on next steps to Super Eval. If you choose to do that, what is, maybe you want to consider further and discuss it later. I think at the present moment, to discuss later might be more prudent.
Thank you.
All right. So moving on, presentation. Adriana.
A motion that we set the consent agenda F1, the number one.
Do I have a second on that? By Mr. Broden. Any discussion? In favor? Supporter? Very much. That brings us down to information reports and discussion. And we're roundtable. Go ahead and start with Todd.
I had the pleasure of attending our board retreat. I'm so psyched, we got so much done. I didn't think we were going to have as much done, but it's like onion, got layers. And we went through many of them from nine o'clock till way past one o'clock. But I was able to squeeze in the football game afterward. Oh, I was looking at the Monties. Jeez, the weeks beating down Liberty on home, that was amazing. So congratulations. That was absolutely fun. I also heard that, I can brag about a fellow shooter that Michael Feldman there, they had a 48 to start his season on. 28, that's out of 50 plays, is it not, sir? It is. You only trot two. That's amazing. If anybody's ever gotten out there, especially with the fall winds, it's difficult because they get smacked around. That's it.
Thank you very much. Wendy?
My, too, was at the board retreat. Again, congratulations to all our sports teams. Football knocked it out of park. I saw the, hmm, what was I at? I was at the soccer games with the boys. And I also, or something else we did, just wanted to bring back today. Cross Country did really good, too, this weekend. My hats off.
Thank you very much, Wendy.
I too went to the board retreat, football game, volleyball game. Community party to this, which went over the second quarter internal audit as well as the X conference with the external audit, which we will present at the October meeting. I also went to the presentation of college in the classroom, which I thought was really, really interesting and really great. I would ask that maybe the board would look into, maybe if we could assist with paying for funding or something for a couple of kids to take these classes because I think they're really great. So that's a still.
Like scholarship or anything.
And it's, you know, sort of paper. Every child gets up to three credits or four credits. How would we help out families and?
Much better. Jen?
No additional. I too that retreat. So that was a great time to connect with all of our board members. And just a reminder to all of our members here that the 2022 NISBA proposed resolutions will be rolling on on October 17. So if any of the members have any feedback that they would like to provide these weeks,
This is a good question worth going to them. I can forward it to, but everyone should receive the email.
Ashley?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. My son, my younger son's involved in fall ball at kindergarten. So that's neat. That's kindergarten through seventh grade-ish. That's happening now. And then also, I realized the last board meeting, I could remember what else. And it was also another baseball event, and that was frozen ropes from Chester. Came and used our fields at the high school. And that was awesome. So I saw a lot of parents and baseball campers. So this was about four weeks back, but they did a great job. For them to come all the way from Chester. The other thing is I wanted just to mention the retreat that we all went to. I think everyone was there. Was actually at the Monticello Central Office Building in the conference room. So I just want to be very clear on that. When I first heard retreat, I thought that meant, you know, you're gonna go away somewhere. But it was in the conference room of the central office building. So I just thought I'd make that really clear. It did seem like we were somewhere special with the graphics on the walls or something like that. Oh, because you're coming. But it was, it was actually really, it was great. Very purposeful, and I got a lot out of it. I think we all did, so thank you.
And I also went to board retreat, and thank you for putting that together, Ken. It was.
That was mostly Janet's doing it, but it did. I just said go, she didn't have anything.
It was great. I went to the physical training on Friday, which I learned a lot from. On 9/11, I went with Boys Got Trip 101 to the nine-month ceremony. Monticello High School. I did a varsity football game, and I have to say, the food at the concession stand blew my mind away. I've never seen food come out of a concession stand like that. I don't know if anybody else that goes to the varsity football game has seen like the fried and beef chicken. It was amazing, absolutely amazing. So I suggest, don't eat lunch, it's a varsity football game, and go buy some concessions. I went to the cross country this week for the senior night, and it was beautiful. We did a really good job. And I also went to the college in the classroom as well. It should be a great presentation as well. And I agree with, we need to do something for our students and scholarships.
I also attended the board retreat. We got a lot out of that. Thank you everyone for coming and participating. The safety meeting this week was canceled, I believe, due to COVID for a couple of personnel that are key and instrumental in pulling that off. So hopefully, that'll be getting rescheduled here shortly. I have attended a few volleyball games. My daughter's presently on JV, but I was not able to attend the football game. I had a prior engagement. Maybe next time. The owners' meeting was, was that last week? Yes. I attended the owners' meeting last week with representatives for our building team and our administration. Things are still moving forward, so that's very good. And the last thing I have, obviously, we have a lot of students here that are attending due to class requirements. The papers you're gonna have us fill out at the end of the night. Any board member can sign them. And try to fill out as much of that paper as you can before you bring it up here, so you don't forget tomorrow before class and handed it. So, but anybody up here at the end of the meeting can sign those papers for you. You don't have to go to anyone in particular and mob up on one person. And that concludes board roundtables. Directors' reports. Any questions or comments on director's reports?
I only see two.
So the C and I report go through the curriculum directors, but yeah, there's no the facilities, facilities and transportation.
Yeah.
I do have a question for Dr. Lamarcus. When you say number three, I'm sorry, number four, to deliver strong inquiry-based instruction, increase academic intervention both in and out of school, what do you mean?
So I actually, you're gonna ask that question, so I do have some handouts for you that I can provide. So just to be clear, when that, so those are from the DZIP, right? And we talked about the process of that. So angry instruction, I'm gonna give you two items for that. And then you also have a question about number three. So I have that as well. So basically, we set, the DZIP committee sets goals, right, for the district in terms of what we would like to accomplish of the court. So basically we set, the DCEP committee sets goals, right, for, uh, for the, the district in terms of what we would like to accomplish of the court. And what we'd like to accomplish. And then it's up to buildings and working with the building leadership teams when they create their building improvement plans to, to operationalize them, right? We don't like to manage what, um, what that looks like at the building level. So, um, my department provides support to, uh, to administrators and teachers in terms of, and that was part of the PD plan, right, in terms of, uh, what can help us all build capacity and be in prominent understanding of what those types of things mean. Um, but when it comes to inquiry-based instruction, um, I'll start with that one since there's been two handouts that I passed out. Um, basically inquiry-based instruction comes from both sides. Either, uh, the teacher is setting an inquiry, a question, right? And so the example that I've given you is from sixth grade social studies. Um, this is an example, um, uh, from the New York State, uh, website on the social studies frameworks. Doesn't necessarily mean that our sixth grade teachers use it. Uh, because our teachers have agency over the curriculum that they develop. But then the example of the central question that needs that entire, um, unit around what debt? So there's a question that we start with and then the inquiry is, you know, does disease, I forget the exact word, sorry, does disease, uh, change the, can, can disease change the world, right? And so that's the inquiry that needs that. The second way that inquiry can happen in a classroom, um, is through student inquiry, right? And so I, um, provided the question formulation technique. So in, uh, March at our conference, we had a keynote with the right, uh, question institute, um, which is this book, um, and, and that protocol is from that. And that's, uh, Barb Recio, our director of, uh, science, math, technology and languages, has done a number of workshops for teachers who are interested uh, around the, uh, question formulation technique. And it's, there's a protocol that you go through to help, uh, students to develop, uh, questions that are of interest to them, that are connected to what you're, what you're teaching, uh, in the classroom. So those are kind of like the two sides that you come back inquiry from. Um, and so we are, you know, interested in having inquiry in, in schools, right? That came from the DCEP committee. Um, but what that looks like in each building and each classroom, uh, really belongs to the buildings and the classrooms and how they actualize that and operationalize that. And I do know that at the next, uh, board meeting, the principals will be, um, presenting their building improvement plans that their building improvement teams have been working on. Um, and so you'll get at that time more specifics about what this looks like, um, in each of the buildings and going forward there. Um, the second part of your question was about the increased academic interventions both in and out of school. Um, and so part of that is, uh, and, and I'll speak to a couple that I know are in process. Um, but again, buildings determine what it is, uh, that they, makes the most sense for their teachers and their students. Um, and so, uh, for example, I know that KLR, uh, last year, uh, provided, uh, the ability for teachers to do after-school tutorials either in person, um, or remotely, right? And so we were able to, uh, provide funding for them to be able to do that. Um, I know that Mrs. Nelson in the middle school, uh, has built into, uh, one of the grants, the ability to, uh, provide off-site tutoring so that we would go to, uh, places within the community, uh, in the evening hours to do. And I know that that has been done previously in the district as well. Um, and looking at, um, you know, that, the high school tutorials, uh, right? And so that provides a lot of academic interventions. Um, and so we're looking at how do we provide programming in the second hour, um, after school before the late buses come so that the tutorials can happen in that first hour, um, after school. But again, it depends upon, um, what each, uh, what each building does to operationalize that. Um, and that's one of the things that we check in with, um, at each decent meeting is, you know, what, what, what goals have you set uh, as a building? And then how are you progressing towards those goals? And then for my department, the question is always, what do we need to do to help to support your progress? In that way, what training, what capacity, um, you know, what, what would be useful for you as, as a building leader and as a, as a building leadership team?
Mr. Gruden. On page ten with the peer mediation, train the trainer. I have a question. Are we still offering the peer mediation in elementary schools?
Uh, not at this time. Uh, that is through those, uh, school boundaries prevention program. And that's specifically targeted to grade six through, uh, ten. It doesn't mean that we won't reuse of it.
Yeah, no, not that part. Know that if they, I know students that had gone through elementary and received that, and I did know the fact they could be tapped as heightened, like bookmarked for being those, they've already been trained up as media's and they can just be refined. Get us going quicker.
Sure. And I will definitely have it up with Mr. Willcheck as he, uh, works with the normal principals. And then your other question was about, uh, family engagement, number three. So, um, I also have another handout about that. Welcome. Um, so, uh, last year we worked with, uh, Scholastic, um, to, and to do, uh, training with each building. And each building put together a family engagement team. Uh, and on that team were various volunteers, teachers, administrators, parents. Um, and, uh, each, uh, team worked with a group of trainers from Scholastic, uh, what they call the dual capacity framework. And that's the handout that I'm passing out right now. Um, and really, again, this is about the agency of the building. So, and so we provided the training, uh, and the framework, and then each building works with their family engagement teams to determine, uh, what their goals are. Um, you know, how they see that they can best, um, improve kind of their family engagement practices over the, over the course of the year. Um, some of the things that came out of that last year were the family literacy night, um, at Cook. That was a direct result of the work that they, uh, teamed with the, uh, with the social scholastic. Um, and I know that there's a lot of things in, in the works, uh, this year. Um, I know that, you know, all the principals have been working on how they get the word out to, uh, to families, um, and caregivers about, um, how they can more actively, uh, be, uh, involved in various activities. So I, you know, I talked to Mr. Pounder this morning, he gave us permission to talk about this. But I know that at his open house next week, he's going to be talking about the various capacities that families can serve, whether it's, uh, re-energizing the PTO and bringing that back. Or, uh, if it's that he's got X number of committees that he is, um, putting together and he would like some parent representatives. And so he's going to be asking for signups. Uh, at that time of the year, just to see if it would be more interesting.
Okay. Will the after-school and before-school, uh, has there been any luck with helping parents with the childcare council pay for everything? Is it able to?
Yeah. So before care, we provide that. So there's no need for them to do that for the before care. Um, but for the after care, I do know that, that we have been, uh, working carefully within childcare council. We've had, um, a large number of families that have been enrolled with healthy kids that have been going through that process. Um, and, you know, we are capping, uh, family, no matter what childcare council says, we are capping, uh, the participation of families to forty dollars a month. So even if childcare council comes back and says, we're only subsidizing X, this was the contract that we had approved, that you all had approved last, uh, fourteen for healthy kids. Uh, the district is contributing to subsidize to ensure that that's the maximum amount that someone paid. But the childcare council, uh, also for some families is covering the entire.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Gruden, on the handout, the most recent one with process conditions on page two, um, policy and program rules, partnership outcomes at the bottom. I apologize. Um, once that families have built their requisite capabilities, connections, competence and conditions to the other engagement partnerships, is that like rollout first semester? Is that at the conclusion of the year? Is it then going to like year two? Is it just a rolling, learning?
It would be rolling and learning and it really depends on building decisions that they make as to how they're rolling this out with a greater community. So I know that, uh, uh, the initial work last year was just with the family engagement teams at the building level. Um, I can't speak specifically to how, uh, principals brought that to their wider faculty or family communities. But I do know that the family engagement teams, uh, you know, will be a lot better well this year. And how they kind of fold that into even their building improvement plans or other endeavors, um, will be part of the things that you measure throughout the year as we check in with the DCEP.
And, and in the educational, uh, environment, RTS and, uh, RTI rather, and MTSS. My experience takes eons to get going. I'm talking like deep into the spring. Um, with the inception of last year, you said. So last year, did this get started in November? Was it December?
It was, it was the training, the training occurred all year. So there was, yes, there was, uh, because what happened to, like, there was training sessions with the whole group. And then, uh, the folks from Scholastic were able to meet with individual groups as well, right? To be very specific about what their goals were, so that we can target them.
This, for me, it's the sooner the better, but unfortunately the wheels turn slowly. That's my point. Um, awesome. Thank you, Mr. Gruden.
Okay. So for the before and after school programs, right now it's forty dollars per month for this year, and that's with government funding and grant support, right? That's correct. What do we think about next year? Is it too early to talk about next year about what people expect?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's a great question. It, it's not too early to start thinking about it. Um, you know, there, there are some, uh, concerns in terms of the fact that some of the subsidies, uh, come from the empire funding, which is going away after this year. Right? And so that would mean that, uh, part of the district contribution we need to increase if we want to keep those levels, um, the same. Um, and so we would have to see, I mean, this, this comes from the title brand, the bulk of it. Um, and so that, uh, allocation changes every year. Um, a lot of factors. So it's, it's hard to predict at this point, um, what we will be able to, um, contribute, but it's definitely something that uh, we'll continue to, to think about so that we can make this manageable for families.
So the title funding, when do we know when we get that support? When do they tell us?
Usually in June.
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky, yeah.
So do you, grant writers or are there that?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Uh, you know, we, we do have a, we put out RFP last year and we do have a grant writing organization, Change, uh, Change Impact. It's the organization that we work with for, um, for grant writing. And so, you know, we are always on the lookout. They bring us things. I'm also on the lookout all the time for various grant opportunities that we can apply for.
You know, Change Impact is a grant writing company or did that company include both ones as well?
No, so that, they're an organization, they're a consulting organization. We use them for a variety of things, but the reason that we got connected with them was that, uh, they are associated with the Technical Systems Center, um, that the state set up for community schools. Um, and so we began, um, kind of conversation and training with them, uh, with the, uh, beginning of the community hub, um, kind of program. Um, and so, uh, depending on need, uh, they have helped us with grants. They have helped us, uh, with Dr. Evans's, uh, restoration plans two years ago. They've done focus groups for, um, uh, My Brother's Keeper. If we're interested in doing some evaluation of that program. Um, they, uh, they helped to write the, um, the School Bonds Prevention Program grant. Um, and in that grant as well, they, um, many, um, state and federal grants require a, uh, an independent evaluator to come in and evaluate your progress on the grant. And then you provide a report to the state. Um, and so sometimes we use Change Impact for that. Sometimes we use a different organization depending, um, um, on the needs that way.
Do we, um, use them to offer training for?
So we, we have not used them for training for teachers. Uh, so it doesn't mean that we wouldn't in the future, but we have not as yet. But we have used them, uh, we are using them for some training of mentors for school levels of which.
Other question about director reports?
I just have one question. Directorage Technology, um, would it be possible to include the average information? And thank you for the report.
No, of course.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
I'd just like to see where we're getting some drop off.
Okay.
If possible, include that in the next report. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, quick. Um, can, can we give us another grant writer besides Change Impact or the other one?
Well, I mean, we could use any one. So the way that we did the RFP, right, was that, uh, I, I, we wanted to make sure that we had a kind of a grant writer that was familiar with us. Because sometimes the narratives can be, uh, quite lengthy. And so, uh, it's easy to have someone that knows Monticello and can kind of bring, um, the same narrative kind of to, to, to there, you know? Um, but the way that they work is each time a grant comes up, if I'm interested in using Change Impact, then I just, we have a rate that they put as part of the RFP that was, uh, approved last year. And so, uh, we know what that rate would be. And so I can just reach out and say, we need to do the McKinney Ventha grant. Um, would you help us write that? Uh, and I, and then how many hours that would be. And so each grant will be, um, addressed separately.
And so you don't say like this is a party, we need to have factor score for a school program and finance grant?
Oh, I definitely do that. Oh, yeah, I definitely do that too. Yeah.
Okay, so, um, the other question I have is about the, um, the MTSS, so the multi-tier support system. So what it shows on here is that it's basically, uh, structured similarly to academic support. So I, my question is, my understanding was it also talks about vocational career goals as well? Does that, like, it, it guides you in your future path and what you should be taking electives and it would be year by year?
Well, so MTSS would be not necessarily, that would be separate.
Okay, not in actual life. Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then another one was, I mean, my last one. Uh, another question was about, um, when it comes to the instruction being diversified, does that also mean as far as using paper and pencil medium as well as the digital? I'm just, I need just to support kids who prefer still.
Yeah, so if we're talking about diversify, yeah, we definitely are looking to how, you know, you know, as te- teachers, right? We all know that there are multiple ways of learning within the classroom, right? And so looking at how we differentiate, diversify the vehicles.
Then, and then I would say also, when it comes to that, um, maybe it's, have you ever processed trading class? You can submit in these tournaments and. Is there any one-on-one time that can be carved out? So if you've got twenty-five students in a classroom, to work with teachers to discuss with them ways that they can somehow manage to have three one-on-one check-ins with students just individually. Cause I know that that's not so easy to, to come across. Um, and then that would sneak some thought and some training and some.
Absolutely. And I know that, you know, I, I'm not sure, uh, Mrs. Nelson will have it in her building plan next time, but one thing that she's talked about for the middle school example, uh, is the stationary rotation model, uh, instruction, right? And so that is looking at how do you bring smaller construction through a secondary classroom to provide uh, that support. You know, we have a lot of teachers that are very adept at that at all levels. Um, then we have other teachers that, you know, we, we'd like some support to, uh, we need to get better at that at all levels, right?
And to be have a contract of change impact until twenty twenty-six, right?
Uh, yes, at the rate that they've coordinated.
Moving on to director reports, capital project updates, Dr. Gruden.
Thank you, Mr. Crumley. So obviously the, the big news this evening is, uh, our boilers are not operational yet in the middle school and high school, uh, which means the heat is not operational yet in the middle school and high school. The board will remember that the boilers were replaced as part of the energy performance contract. Uh, they had been working, uh, pretty diligently over the past several weeks to get those up and operational. Um, they think that they need one more day to make them work and turn them on. Fortunately, mother nature is not cooperating and the weather forecasts are to dip around forty, forty degrees by seven AM tomorrow morning. And I believe the forecasted high from Monticello is around fifty-two degrees. So, uh, our facilities, uh, department will be, uh, monitoring the classrooms early tomorrow morning, uh, in case that those don't reach a suitable temperature for, uh, for our students and staff. Uh, at which time they'll be notifying me, uh, I know later than five-thirty about, uh, what those room temperatures are and whether or not you might consider switching to remote. Um, so we've made that announcement late in the day. We put that out on Parents Square. Uh, and I know that in the schools, they, they've made that clear too. Uh, but again, we would, uh, our elementary schools are not affected in any way by it, but our middle school and high school might be, depending on how chilly it gets tonight. Uh, and we'll also be putting to test our, uh, our thirty-eight R-rated, uh, new insulation. That's in the one hundred, two hundred, let you see how well that holds up over there. Um, contractors are, uh, they've installed additional door sweeps on the bottoms of doors, the one hundred wing, uh, facing the courtyard to prevent, uh, water leaks. Uh, there was some. Uh there was some water that was entering there under the doors when we had heavy rainfalls late in August. Uh so we believe that that's been mitigated. Uh the exterior panels on the one-hundred, two-hundred wing will begin on Monday. Uh so this is going to be done during uh the day shift. We've been in contact with Lechace and Key about uh, you know, that students are, students that are going to be in the building for much of that time. Uh they did inquire and look into second shift work. If it was to go to second shift, that would be a minimum of an additional three hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Uh that would require another change order. Uh so uh Mr. Lewis, Mr. Wilder and I uh heard what the drilling would sound like as they drill in the pegs to mount the panels. Uh we believe that it would cause minimal disrupt disruption um and that it's, it would be more efficient for them to do it during the first shift. Uh we did share with them our schedule, so they know that we're closed on Monday, they're going to do a lot of work then. They know we're closed for Columbus Day and on October fifth for Yom Tov, as well as November first for Conference Day and November. So we are communicating regularly with them about uh those opportunities. The interior blinds uh and the window blinds for the one-hundred, two-hundred wing will be installed the first week in October. Um contaminated soil removal continues at the site of the old bus garage. Uh once this contaminated soil is removed, and we were expecting that because that's where the old garage was, and they do things like still buses with gasoline and change oil and other pollutants, so we knew that was expected. Uh and then tonight, and joining us tonight is Chris Ladany from CPL uh to answer any questions that you might have on the change order uh regarding work that was done over the summer. Uh in particular, uh the steam room partition design, that's room one oh something, don't hold me to that. But that's the room that is, there's a divider in it that would be open and closed depending on how teachers wanted to run projects in there. So that was a redesign, as well as kind of lingering effects of the cold form metal framing and all of that, the work that went uh in the back. There is a detailed memo uh not only from CPL but also from Lechace that describes each of those expenditures. And also here tonight to answer any of those questions you might have. It's Mr. Ladany. Do you have any questions on the change orders? This would probably be the best time.
Does anybody have any questions on the present change order?
Well, I have a question, I should direct it to you. And you said hopefully they're going to be working when we're closed?
Well, they will be, they will be working, I guess maximizing their schedules while we're.
Okay, um a question I do have, how come the the sweeps weren't attached to doors prior to the flooding?
They they actually were, we put a a a deeper sweep on it. And for one of the doors, the, you know, they typically set up one door with all the accessories, the weather, the stripping, um bumpers and things like that. Um I guess that wasn't applied for all of them. But now that we saw the the water coming, um no matter what would have went in, the sweeps are adjusted. So we adjusted them a little lower, the door got a little tighter, but that, you know, helps prevent the damage. So the sweeps are always going to go in, um it was just kind of, you know, the schedule kind of amplified them quicker than I thought it would. It's a total thing of us, you know, we hit a, it was to a point where sweeps, so there will be more work like that, just to button up the sweeps and things, but that was. I know.
Okay. I have a question. So you designed the the building, like the window?
Yeah, our our firm did that.
Who who designed that looking? Was it like Dr. Evans or was it like?
Yes, officially designed process that we go through. Initially, we'll uh start with unit removals, so unit removals, um some of them are part of that. Um Tim got involved a little later on.
This process goes back close to five years.
Yeah, it's about five.
That design process probably started about five, six years ago. It goes as a concept, or in that side of the library.
So you know, any administrators of school or just a board?
No administrators at the time.
Yeah, during that time. Yep.
Because these plans are really old overs from the hundred and hundred and twenty million dollar bond, uh I'm sorry, one-ten um that went out to the voters that got voted down. So these plans actually go back to those uh capital project votes. That got voted down three times, we pared everything back to the fifty-four million dollar project. The design stayed the same, the scope narrowed.
Is there any really great design we can put in front of the door before the stuffs? I understand that you can add an adjust. Not having water, any kind of oak, they didn't get it away?
No, it's all the concrete.
Right.
Standard is pitch any sort of concrete that's attached to it.
So it got blown in?
Yeah, that that day we'd be driving.
Okay.
Yeah.
August thirtieth, right?
Yeah.
And did I know flooded with this recent rain?
No, not.
Not related to the project, there is a roof drain issue. Uh there's two roof issues in the old, second, let's say old roof, roofs that were not part of the project. So three hundred wing, there's a roof drain that has some type of cloud or how functioned it. Uh and then in the seven hundred wing, there is a, I'll take a hole in the roof. So there are two separate issues not related, as far as we know, not related to the project or right next to it.
What do we get here?
Uh they've, they've been looking at the one, the roof drain one, uh but that's still needs work. And they're waiting for uh being contracted to come in to do the three hundred, probably next week. The one with the hole in it, it needs to be dry.
Okay, and when do you put it out, everything was officially done?
Yeah, so the interior works um hasn't done yet, but the exterior panel work, uh that's slated to be finished by end of December.
You don't foresee any other change words?
At this point, there will be, you know, I have this call with Lisa tomorrow, and also meeting with all the contractors and commissioners. It is, you know, the summer, the year, the time that we measure and done, modified schedule, underworked. Um so now it's time to just kind of uh close the deal and and uh trickle back on all the financials. Those that depend on it sort of, it's going to be a change, that's that's the, that begins the tour of the structure. So the way that the state looks at um this project is that they have it separately per building. The change orders that you see are typically broken down to a building. So the one that you're, you know, that that's favored tonight is for high school. Um and they sort of definitely want to be something that we're going to have there. Um and then uh some of the, there's the final general condition. Contractors that have to stay on longer, to be, uh you know, reconciled on that as well. So our plan is to, you know, avoid meaning in the future, I don't know if it's the next one, the following one, to come to the board with, with, with complete. You were the financial, I'm telling you, really focus on all of it, so. Um I also wanted to say thank you to everyone involved in this project, including the district and the board, and just the patience of everybody here, and also the the director of the facility, the facility maintenance department that helped out tremendously for this uh, you know, opening of school. I think it really hands, all hands on deck, um kind of uh situation where everybody was looking at the city hall and really focused on the work parts, and I want to just express my gratitude for the patience and the hard work that that everybody does.
The other question is about this change order, um let's start with Wendy.
Uh something like the change order, but I would like to contrast, I don't know, is it appropriate, I would love, and the board walkthroughs. We talk and about all these change orders, and I know the last time I was there, what are we running through? The coming right off and down through those doors, which I'm assuming we're talking about, putting the things on. So I would like, I'd really like the opportunity to see or even to assign this building, not just, you know, exclusively to the high school, but if, you know, maybe we could be company administrators, have walkthroughs, like we used to do, English punch lists out there, some that, you know, we need to take a look at, so we know where we're going. As this rounds off, that there was other things, and not just a student to our high school, that might need to be grants, like to take the floor, the sheet, that I would just love to be able to go into group or even delegate to the building, so I want to start that up.
So there's a couple of different ways we can approach this one. I do think it's uh certainly the board, we should do a walkthrough of the one-hundred, two-hundred wing, go back with uh the old, the old, the previous board did that with the new transportation center, so I think now is probably the time to to put the one-hundred, two-hundred wing on the schedule. Um relative to other buildings, it's my understanding, and and correct me if I'm wrong, but uh that when the board will go out to the other schools, when you have your meetings, you can kind of uh walk around them now.
Yeah, delegates of different buildings, you have the night mission, um.
I think the, I think the first year me and Tom Ron, um Stephen walked us around the buildings that we went to the remote meetings.
It's uh seeming to be dependent now on the live streaming equipment is here, so.
Well, the last two years has been a little.
Yeah.
Yeah. The live streaming, the live, the live streaming will be chasing us to chase next meeting.
Seems to do that.
So essentially, we're still going out to the.
All right. When I came on, we actually had, we didn't do, walked through.
As the whole board of.
It was, we took pictures and reported back to the board, the commission in place.
So. So we can, we can set up that way. The other thing that the board has is a capital project that uh should that committee want to kind of gather facilities and then bring it back to the whole board, that could get another potential added.
I think that the whole board should go in there. And they do enforce full starts.
Yeah.
The whole entire board, they do it all along. I think we also go as a board together. So we each.
See what we can put together and develop some sort of calendar that might work for everyone.
Just not the school.
Sure, and you have.
We should buy, I have a walkthrough also of the flooding, walkthrough, you know, parts that were down. So that was things that would be granted, when I saw the position of, you know, school, it's the same thing for St. John, and I had a walkthrough for the Johns too. And it was good to, we were talking about these projects and actually talking about the water flowing through, I had a better understanding of what I'm reading, what I'm seeing, and what, you know, the kids are in the building, they're seeing it every day coming home, I'd really like to see a lot.
Yeah.
Um. Also not about the changer, but the schedule in general. So I know that there's some outside work to be done, we're waiting on this, so it'll be taken care of. And that's all going to be shaved in front of Brad. And then outside the one-hundred, two-hundred wing, I mean, there's a whole bunch, I mean, that's your staging area. But once that's cleaned up, does any work have to be done there, and are we going to get all that paving done? What's the schedule for that? Are we going to get that done before it's too cold to pave?
So we could, you know, that's up to the, so that paving piece, you know, it's up to the board, we have a policy to do that, I can, you know, share it with the team. Um and you guys want that to be paved, you know, you can, so it would be, we get it done, you know, this fall, it would be a changeable to the project. Or we can do it in the next spring.
So you outside the one-hundred?
Yes.
That wasn't in there at all?
It it's an original bond scope, but not part of TAC two.
I, okay, alright.
So you're saying that, what about that fence? That fence is not going to be done before winter? That's.
Oh, we did the construction fence, so the construction fence is going to be, uh now, you know, come mid October, uh you know, I can talk to the team. Probably consolidate the fence, but we're going to get a new fence, somebody's putting that in. Right, so it's a real question to see now, it's not going to be a first quarter out there, so. Right, how many technical contracts, the public contract, the electrical contract, and then the general contract, all of that. You know, uh the the mental panels is only the general contractor's uh scope. Uh it's in other trades, you know, that way that kind of staging is very different. Sure. So, um and then really the the fencing at the bus garage is going to be put up as well, so it's going to be paved and fenced at the bus garage once.
So our kids already have sort of a walkway this winter, this fence here, because like right now, it's like they're walking on the.
Yes, yes. Yeah, so the tennis court project, it's slated to finish in November, I think. So that one is really, yeah, I I we've been driving up.
Yes.
And this is where people thank everybody on board with this, it's not a bad situation, but if it's probably done, you can kind of, you know, to people. Um it's unnecessary, it's, we're really close, we were on set with the with the pants boys. So um once, once everything's done, and I'll mention this, it's a learning construction, we're going to um try to, you know, really shrink down, squeeze it to the right, that's where I'll move it to.
Yeah, it's near, it's two, it's two thousand.
Chris Todd, it's the uh, a part of the original scope, uh since we've seen prices through the roof.
At this point, there will be no paving this fall. None of the stuff, they're going to have machines off of, and by the time they have stuff off of it, the asphalt plants will be closed. So don't have any well wishes about paving anything this fall.
What about the bus garage? How long is that going to be?
There that we.
Are they attracted to that?
Well, the.
The better.
The issue, wait a minute, because I got this for today. The issue with the contaminated soil that they found is that it's not, it's not compatible, be reduced, right, the non-contaminating soil, so this is kind of the earth that was around the contaminated soil.
Right.
It's not contaminated, but it can't be put back in because it can't compact correctly, they got that right, so now they have to dispose of that.
Dispose that and then also bring in, bring in new compatible, you know, stuff.
Right.
So it's it it's, it's not ideal, but it's the reality of it, that, you know, because we're going back and forth, whether or not we use it, or my engineers are back. You're not going to put down that, that risk.
We're really good.
It's a good, it's a pretty good product, yeah. Yeah, I mean, years and years of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thing is, it's not common.
Any other questions on the change order?
So so, so just to get me if I get the answer to my question, you don't think they're going to be able to pave the bus garages?
The bus garage, I I, you know, that that might, that has a better, definitely better chance of getting paved as opposed to the outside of the one-hundred, two-hundred wing.
Right.
As Tim spoke, you know, cheese out there, uh putting the pounds on the building. Um, you know, the contaminated soils, this is a little bit of a moving target there, with with that, because, you know, we got the department, you know, you know, D C business involved, right? So they're the authority, and they're sort of, you know, I can't predict what they're going to do.
Right.
So until we have consensus from them and directives from them, where our hands are kind of not in detail. But bottom line is, we're pushing to get that done as soon as we can. Question.
I just want to ask, is anything that can be done to feed the space, to target that work, that the man has sold for somewhere within fifteen minutes? Fifteen minutes from maybe the light where you go up to the high school, I don't, I've driven before years, and even not walking for some reason. I don't know if it's just how it's laid out, but people can't get it out, it's confusion, but I, it's just, I don't know, something could be done that may be bigger or change. Fifteen minutes, like small, we can, hundred minutes after.
Yep.
Maybe you're sitting waiting on the drop-off stores, and you're not happy to say, I got there, going after it, and twenty seconds before you get to the, to the drop.
So I'll talk to, that's, you know, really our security staff that kind of coordinates that, I'll talk to Mr. Murphy to take a look at it. Uh, that's, not terribly new, that that's been around. Might be, might be.
Cars at a time.
Yes. It might be exacerbated because of the project a little bit, but.
I just figured, I see how, Monday was like that, and today, today.
I'll, I'll have our security staff.
Any other questions on this change order? Thank you very much for coming, Chris, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm moving on to policy committee memo we have done at the present time. Policy committee meets, uh, it's fixed at five thirty here. Here, on Chase, right Chase, wherever we are.
You want to mention something about you and Janet are going through, you're making something of one of the memos we sent out?
Yes, so uh the policy committee uh recommended, suggested that start a spreadsheet as we go through the policy manual, look at each policy when it was adopted. And then kind of keep that spreadsheet as a running tally of the age of policies. So right now, we took all policies from zero. all policies from zero to twenty. I have itemized those and we requested template policies from NISB. And looking at those compared dollars. So many of them have been updated over the past two years. I mean, that's connected to probably half of them. But there's some of them that are dated back to two thousand seven. So we, we've just started to get those template policies from NISB started.
So the policy meeting, Dan, they'll bring back to the whole board, they vote?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, the policy committee will start working. It's going to be a multi-year prime.
Right.
Awesome. Um, so moving on to correspondence, um, the Democrat, um, had some very nice articles about Monticello. Definitely worth the read. Upcoming events. Uh, obviously, if you mentioned a few times, the meeting next, our next meeting will be a chase school. There will be a policy, uh, a policy meeting before that. So we will be at Chase, we will be live streaming from Chase. Listed on the agenda is days off, education meeting, Board of Education meetings. Um, and all the highlights are on the agenda. Community events. Um, there's a couple events on the agenda. If anybody knows any events, feel free to let us know. So we can include them in the agenda going forward. Um, I know there's a school truck treat, that was when we were in, uh, that was when we were going to be at the state conference and they have truck treats. And most of the, most of the elementary school at this point do have a truck treat going on.
I don't, yeah, I, I know, I know cooks. And I know that that conflicts with some of us who are going to this book. Everyone's going to this book, so that is in your or the, or docs, if you're interested, just contact, uh, see the Miss Libel, she'll lay it back to Miss Ruston or the Captain Ruston.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Janet, do we have anybody listed to public comment?
Yes, we have two, host is John Maranza.
I just have to read a brief statement. Board of Education recognized the valuable public comment on educational issues and matters of public interest. In order to commit the fair and orderly expression of public comment, following rules shall govern and will be administered by the presiding officer. Please note that the first public comment period of forty-five minutes maximum duration will be at the beginning of the meeting and a period of fifteen minutes maximum at the end of the meeting. Either period may be extended by the majority vote of the board. Either public comment period is a time for public discussion. If necessary, the community member will be contacted for follow-up. If you reach to speak, place your name, email, or address, a telephone number on the sign-up list indicating the topic of your comments. Prior to making your comments, state your name on the record. Identify any group or organization you represent. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker. A speaker may not yield his or her time to another speaker in order to extend the time for comment. No speaker may comment on or identify any particular student or employee by name, position, or situation, or certain comments. All comments are to be directed to the board president designated. Handouts and door petitions are to be given only to the board president for distribution support. The board will receive and consider all written comments. A memo will be placed on the agenda on the next meeting under information, reports, and discussions to keep the board informed of the outcome. It will be titled Correspondence Outcomes and will be a public document. I conclude. Shannon, this is.
John Maranza.
John Maranza.
We moving anywhere in particular for comments or?
You're probably good there if you want to come up front, feel free.
No, I'm fine, I can object. Uh, good evening, board president members. Over the past three years, the COVID pandemic has produced an unprecedented and unrivaled crisis in public education. Children, families, societal structures, and educational communities were severely stressed while pre-existing figures and inequities were activated, resulting in the widening of these economic health and achievement gaps. We are now in a full-blown crisis felt nationally statewide and at the local level where professionals are leaving public education in droves due to pressures, presses, increasing job responsibilities, and an often untenable workload. However, the biggest reason for this flight from public education by far is a pervasive feeling by professionals of being disrespected and underappreciated by having their voices taken away, left to feel expendable and replaceable. For the past three years, Monticello Teachers Association has fought hard as we are legally afforded under the Taylor law to have a voice in determining the teaching practices and positions which we, which would be implemented in the strange new world of COVID. We created an M O A, memorandum of agreement with the district for each year with shared understanding and dates of expiration. This year, our voice was stripped away by the district and a unilateral decision was made without our consent and input. This unilateral decision by our district concerned teacher responsibilities for remote instruction when students are diagnosed with COVID. This happened despite the fact that the MTA approached the district in August asking to discuss our plan for the upcoming year. The district informed us that they were not prepared to discuss it, even as the opening of the school year was only two weeks away. It is irresponsible and a delinquency of duty that the district cannot have a negotiated plan in place to the beginning of the year to act like situations involving COVID-positive teachers and students would not commence immediately during week one versus put your proverbial head in the sand. The Monticello Teachers Association has filed a notice of claim with the Public Encomitant Relation Board concerning the district's violation of the Taylor law. We are asking that the district rescind its unilateral decision on remote teaching and learning until the two parties can negotiate and discuss the drawbacks, complications, and ramifications of such a decision. We are also making a formal request to have regularly scheduled meetings with the Monticello Board of Education so that we may begin to forge relationships focused on transparency, dialogue, shared understanding, and our roles as stakeholders with common goals. And in that vein, we would be more than welcome to be your ambassadors on a building walkthrough. I think it's a fantastic idea to do so. Uh, the last few months have seen an alarming and disproportionately large exodus of employees from our district across all of our units. If employees feel undervalued, underappreciated, and unheard, this trend will continue.
John.
I have two sentences left.
Two cents to finish it up.
We have not only lost employees in schools in Orange County, but we also now lose some regularly to smaller districts in our county. If the two of you.
John.
Take a hard, I have two sentences, now it's one sentence.
It's a pretty long sentence.
Well, it was once, I have one sentence left.
John. Thank you. If you would like to submit your, uh.
Here's a letter for everybody on the board now.
Ms. Maranza, uh, Janet?
Connie Chang.
Connie.
Good evening, I'm Connie Chang. I am a teacher for Monticello District and the vice president of grievances for the MTA. Um, my comment question is regarding the superintendent evaluation tool that was brought up tonight. Um, teachers are evaluated through direct observation and student test scores. I'm curious where the direct evidence comes from in the proposed superintendent evaluation. Um, it seems that the superintendent is presenting his own evidence, so essentially evaluating himself. Um, I'm just curious where the shareholders have a voice in evaluating superintendent? And would it be important to hear from the six hundred plus employees who the superintendent leads? And when and how will this occur in his evaluation?
Thank you very much. Janet, is anyone else signed up?
Joanne Kellinger.
Joanne.
Hi, I'm Joanne Kellinger, I'm Char J. Pay, and I'm also vice president of negotiations for the MTA. And I had a question about the building project. Um, it's my understanding that the flooding of the high school new wing did not occur prior to the capital project. So I would like clarificationist in this area as reports from high school staff indicate leaks, especially around the three hundred bridge. So just as we can get back to us on that, that would be great.
Thank you very much. That concludes, thank you very much, Jim. Um, Dr. Evans, superintendent update and information.
Certainly, well, good evening, everyone. Uh, first, I want to recognize, uh, we do have a new member of the, uh, the faculty and family. I don't know if she's here tonight, but that's Calista Ferguson. Uh, Calista is a new teacher at Cook Elementary School. Ferguson, no? Uh, so congratulations to her and welcome back to Ms. Mayeska, who is rejoining us as a math teacher in the high school. So it's great to have her back and working with our kids as well. Uh, first, on top of the docket, the New York State Education Department has, the Board of Regents has officially adopted regulations on the monitoring of private schools. Uh, this is something that's referred to as substantial equivalence. Uh, we have three private schools in our district that will require this monitoring. Uh, this, the Board of Regents has adopted some criteria that should those private schools meet that criteria, they would not require more official monitoring. Uh, in the event that we do, uh, we are in discussions with Sullivan Boses, uh, for them to run a, a shared co-service to do that, uh, monitoring of the private schools in our district and other schools in the county has asked for that as well. Uh, these, uh, school districts will need to attest to the state education department whether or not the private school has met the level of substantial equivalence by December first, twenty twenty-four. Then it will be an annual occurrence thereafter. So we're working, uh, with our Boses to get that, and our private schools as well to get that going. The governor, uh, failed to renew the, I shouldn't say failed, elected to renew the expiration of the COVID nineteen state of emergency. Uh, and what that will do is therefore limit boards of education and how they conduct remote meetings. Meaning if a board member were to remote in and actively participate in the meeting. So right now, we're live streaming this meeting on our YouTube channel, it doesn't affect that at all. But if a board member were unable to attend a board meeting in person, and I believe the way it's worded has, uh, valid reasons for it or significant reasons for it, they could remote in and participate and vote in that meeting if the board were to adopt a resolution allowing it. So that's kind of the new method. The old method would be that, uh, if a board member were to remote in for valid reasons, they would have to give their physical location and allow anybody who might want to sit in with them at that physical location to do so. That's kind of the old law, it's always been. But this new option, uh, would give certain situations that were serious enough where the board member could not attend in person to do that. You wouldn't have to disclose your location. We would, however, need to have an in-person court. So there would still be an in-person meeting, in this case, with at least five board members. If the board wanted to pursue that, you will need to give me some direction and work with legal counsel to develop a resolution that would authorize those meetings to happen. I believe it's like one resolution that would be good for the year or maybe forever after. I don't believe it's a resolution every time that the meeting occurs, but I can give the board more information if we want to go that way. You have a.
I would like to go there.
Yeah, I'd be interested. I just want to make sure that we spell out what those particular, not every particular reason, but that they're well defined.
Okay, defined qualifications for promoting it.
Are we allowed to go outside?
I don't believe so, because I believe they came straight from the, the new open meetings law that was adopted back in April. Yeah, and there is an old, uh, I don't say old, but, uh, our legal counsel gave us previous guidance on this back in April. All right, so I'll come back with more information on that. Uh, staffing update, we still, uh, struggle like many school districts around the state and the country to fill our vacancies. Um, there are eleven current vacancies, some of them are being filled by full-time subs. Uh, some of them we expect to fill by the next meeting, others of them are very challenging to fill. Uh, we also have more administrative vacancies that we're currently searching and conducting interviews on. Uh, and we expect to have, uh, we hope to have some appointments for those at the next board meeting. Uh, we have just tentatively scheduled the fall sessions of another cup of coffee, uh, where I'll be at each school, uh, early in the morning and, uh, drop off and admission. Uh, so I'll be there out in front. Uh, those dates will be made public very soon, if not tomorrow, then by next week. As was mentioned earlier, uh, the policy reviews, we've begun reviewing those, uh, and we'll have more information for the policy committee when it comes out October sixth. And, uh, most recently, I attended the New York State Council School Superintendent's Conference Sunday through Tuesday of this week. Um, I attended some keynote sessions since I, uh, provided by the New York State Commissioner of Education, Dr. Betty Rosa, uh, the New York State Teacher of the Year, uh, Billy Green out of New York City, uh, as well as, uh, the founder of World Savvy, uh, her name is Dana Mortenson, uh, who leads kind of a curriculum development firm. I also attended a number of breakout sessions designed on strategies for staff wellness and communication strategies. Um, and many of the conference attendees, uh, who are superintendents and other district administrators throughout the state are dealing with many of the same issues that we are relative to, you know, resuming full-time in-person instruction, labor shortages. Uh, there was some, I guess, optimism when the commissioner of education discussed how they were, uh, aviating some of the certification requirements, uh, that might hopefully attract more people into the teaching profession and also give this, give school districts more flexibility in hiring practices. So they, they have, you know, kind of recognized that some of their, their rules and regulations have repeated the process. Uh, and last but not least, we were planning on delivering the, uh, three through eight, uh, E L A and math results from last spring. Uh, but they hadn't released the embargo, uh, but four o'clock this afternoon, I got a memo from the State Education Department that said the embargo's been lifted. So, uh, our intention is to bring those to the board at the October twentieth meeting. Uh, the school administrators presenting their school improvement plans at the October sixth meeting. But, uh, I can give you the overall numbers as we sit currently. In E L A, we had, in grades three through eight, we had a ninety percent participation rate. Twenty-five percent of our students were proficient, meaning they were at levels three and four. By comparison, in two thousand nineteen, we had a ninety-one percent participation rate. And twenty-one percent of our students were proficient. So that's interesting and especially interesting when you talk about math. So in math, grades three through eight this year, we had an eighty-six percent participation rate, but only twelve percent of our students were proficient. Two thousand nineteen, we had an eighty-eight percent participation rate and twenty-one percent of our students. So some different things going on there that we need to dive a little bit deeper on, uh, in terms of what might have been causing that. But we'll be giving the board more details for edits.
Any questions for Dr. Evans?
Yeah, I do. Doctor, when you were at your, um, sessions, they talk about, um, how to uplift your employees or anything to bring.
Well, yeah, uh, and, and a lot of it is like really school-focused and really having, uh, you know, staff members and administrators kind of take the lead role of that, a lot of, you know, kind of recognitions, um, opportunities to, you know, school spirit stuff. Um, I think the key is, you know, have kind of school-level sunshine committees or wellness committees that drive that. Schools around the state that, you know, kind of present and we're doing that, and we have those set up in our schools.
Do we have sunshine?
In the schools, yes, there's sunshine and or wellness committees. Uh, that lead kind of spirit activities.
Well, what about our staff, how would the board, our staff? I mean, I don't think you talk about wellness and sunshine, but how also.
No, but those are, those are kind of, you know, and providing, you know, opportunities, uh, whether those be, you know, refreshments, acknowledgements, um, relaxation, things on conference days too, or staff wellness, individual mindfulness, if you will. You know, good before, we'll probably continue that as well during conference days.
Do you think maybe having like what maybe a better relationship, like some kind of like what Don was saying, is that a possibility to reach together?
I'm, I'm.
About if you haven't meeting, request meeting once a month or something like that? How would you totally, really?
Well, uh, that's something that, you know, we can talk about, but generally speaking, the Board of Education hires a superintendent and administration uh, to, you know, work with staff, supervise staff, support staff, report back to the board, report back to staff from the board. Um, so you hire people to do that. It's not a, uh, general practice or a practice that any school district, um, but board wants to discuss.
The other comments or questions for Dr. Evans?
I have a question about the substantial equivalence.
Yes.
Equivalents. I know it's early, probably don't know the answers, but I'm curious, um, what's going to be, like, how much work you're doing? How much is going to cost us, how much time you have to pay to do this, right?
So that's a bit of a trigger word for Dr. Oliver Mars. Depend, it really depends on the extent to which private school has established practices around some of the, I don't want to call them concessions, but some of the criteria.
Right.
So I think one of them is like having a bed, so. Right, that was.
Yeah, they all have beds codes. One of our private schools gives the state assessments, so they're already.
Right, so that's.
Already examined from. So they're already, right, so that's already examined from us coming to provide that. The other two.
So it depends on really how, the extent to which the private school kind of abides by, you know, they adopt it quickly and make those things that, yeah, otherwise it could be.
Moving on to.
I have a question. What private school did we have?
We have the Hebrew Day School and then we have two business school.
The Bible School, which is the girl's school, and Thomas School, which is the boys' school. I think the school's about 400 total.
And one even.
Well, in terms of, I mean, like a private school allowed to do, what are they, care to do it? Right, but now with this new regulation, there are international backdoor and state assessments, something that they're using to monitor. And there's one that Hebrew Day School already has been giving the state assessments for many, many years. So they have not want to change about it.
Right, because the others.
The others either have to make some decisions about it.
Thank you.
Assistant Superintendent for Business, Lisa.
Seeing I have a memo asking the board to access some instruments from the middle school that have exceeded their useful life and are not available. Asking board to award, forbid that we conducted improvements to the baseball field. I have this whole resource officer agreement with Solomon County. We have the claims auditor, budget, revenue status, and school on profit and loss for the run of the job.
I know where you're going. What's the scope of the baseball field?
So the scope included some regrading of the, I'm not a baseball person, so I'm going to say this wrong. I know the pitcher's staff regrading, paths between the bases, regrading zones and putting in some drainage in the outfield, like just behind dirt areas and the grass area. Is it the?
I was like, what?
Nobody. I showed a bid, but it's. Sorry. I, I, I can't even say. So I'm just. So for reference, that regrading, we're just. Not the middle school field sales.
There are also stations in the road, the other counties. That's downstate, where you used to come down to here, Westchester and Rockland, that used to do work. Any other questions, Lisa?
All right, one more question, sorry. So is this a band-aid fix of the drainage or is this a burn thing?
It's, it's not the complete fix of the drainage on the field. It's going to help.
If you read, if you read the RFP, it's really to kind of true up the baseball field itself, re-sodding, regrading, redoing the base pass and things, redoing the mound, resetting the home plate and pitchers over there and resetting all of that type of stuff to kind of true that field up. The rains typically blow bases on for about three to four days. So if you can start getting that to kind of run off, is it going to fix the whole entire field and stuff? But Stephen has been doing a great job of kind of piecemealing that area down there through budgetary ways to make improvements now. I'd like to take flavor of the board. It's getting late. We have a lot of students here. How does everyone feel about letting students sign their documents or downstate go?
Board of Education.
So when did you have your first meeting?
Yeah, 9:22.
I put 7:50.
I put 7:45 because that's what they like called it.
Time to do that. I mean, it didn't come down there right now. She's at any one of.
Oh my God, do you want to know what I wrote?
Hey, bro, that was so, so good, right?
You want to actually tell me what I wrote?
Oh. I wrote three. I did, I did. Oh, not really. I kind of just, yeah. I kind of just wrote this and then.
Where's Mr. Barron again?
This. That's all you have? That's all you have out of that whole thing? A goat, right? That was so.
I thought he was about to go up there like four seconds.
Doc, Ashley, can I get your bag? All right, continuing the meeting. All right, Assistant Superintendent for Great Movement Instruction, update.
Thank you. I'm asking the board to approve two contracts. Before I go into the contracts, just wanted to give a review. We got the unofficial words today from the state that we have approved for the community special education. So yeah, so we're hoping to get a job with the rate setting, which I know this is big, but it's pretty successful. So two contracts I'm asking the board to approve. The first is the Walkout Boys Ignorance Club Faces Agreement. This is the program that is run by the high school. It's for about 250 students. Some, you can see is attached to that, some of the program components. Some of the challenges in secondary student after-school programming compared to elementary is that they're not necessarily regular attendance at those programs. And so they kind of build a program and then they give us regular days just in terms of how many students actually show up. It's up to the students that believe it will sort of. The other contract I'm asking the board to approve is your life speaks. Nathan Hardman, he was with us last spring, our middle school and high school. He's looking to come back again this week out of the school.
Any questions for Linda on her update? Helen?
Just to clarify, so five is regardless. I don't think I'm assuming some of the lottery. It's not part of the.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. So if you look at the addendum on the back, it breaks down kind of the costs. And so you can see like which you filter up and that we have a ton of instructors, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, Mr. Groden. From before, our new program that's piloted with New York State, do we have, how many students are availing themselves to this alternate path to graduating?
Oh, in the arts category?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have that number now. I have an update for you.
I should try to get back on that because I thought we were going to have a presentation on that. We got started and then we're going to reach out to parents to let them know how it was going to pilot out. What's the enrollment, sorry? Enrollment of the, in these schools?
Worked to 10 right now. Yeah, enrollment is 20 by the end of the first quarter.
So how did that recruitment happen?
Sure. So right now, I know that Mrs. Gore and Mr. Wilder have been talking often about, about various students that would be a good fit. I know that Mrs. Gore met with the guidance department in the high school to provide some view of Mr. Kessler has been, you know, heavily involved in that as well. They are preparing a form to distribute to the teachers that if there's a teacher, a student that they recommend that they can get kind of that information. And then if you don't, a lot of personal reaching out to families and to students. The one qualifier that we have in the program right now is that students have to elect to go there. So that, looking with families and students to understand benefits. We are planning in, I have a curriculum council that I sit on that is part of Solomon County. We are planning, I'm going in November, but do a little presentation about it. Previous, the previous iteration of this community school, when it was a predator recovery program, we had a number of students from Liberty and they gave tuition to join us. So I brought up the program and the model that we're using at the last meeting and it was interesting learning more about it. I have a question. I'm not sure.
One second.
Can we teach you some of that side of the room?
And I, I know this might be a little crazy, but the shortage that was happening on the other side, they're not, are they all being utilized or? So there's no. Curious.
Sorry.
Can you know what, I should have followed it. I may be right, Linda, what are attendances, our enrollment, I should say, compared to last year right now? I'm sorry, is our enrollment up this year compared to last year or is it down? The overall enrollment?
So you were given that at the last meeting. We usually provide those, I think, every, 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 every other meeting. So you get an update, a good indicator will be next one because that's around Bedday, October 6th, and then that's what the state uses, state ed uses to make enrollment determinations as Bed State and Bed State, which is October 6ish every year.
So after the month of it update?
Yeah, this is usually in my report.
Okay.
Yeah, about once a month, every other meeting.
Oh.
So you had one on opening day.
I know you said opening day is kind of like. And I can say that we, you know, we have over 50 families of students that haven't shown up at all, right? And so that has been communicated to our attendance officers and I know that they have kind of tracked down if there's family still in district left and just not, you know, in those normal kinds of things.
To dovetail the two reports as far as the third through eight that got on embargo at four o'clock and then this data, is there a way with attendance? Can we have those numbers of the children that opted out of the, of our state, of our group? Do we get the breakdown, not the demographics? Do we get the academic profile, like are these high achievers and they happen to opt out? And that's why our numbers also went down? Is there a correlation of students that have higher? If, if the parents are more involved and have an opt-out, is that going to directly affect our numbers that we had more students that were doing better in school and you're like, no, I'm not going to do the state tests? I wanted to know how that, if we had 83% or we had 81%, what about the 19%? Are they the achievers? And also, do they also, does it also mean that the parents are involved? And if they're more involved, then they're also doing better in school? But the other ones that are being taken out of the pool? And, and or is it like you just said about 50 families not being here? Is it attendance? So when we get that coming later, is it attendance thing that we have? People not being there and opting out or is it that?
You're asking if that 14% would raise the final total by 14% in order to raise it subjectively just as much? Would it only be 21% of that 14%? Right. And what made that difference? Is that what we're asking? See if it works.
So it's, I don't know that it'd be worth, it'd be a lot of work to do like a deep dive on the opt-outs. I mean, we can do some generals. One thing that I've done in previous districts that has a similar question was take the opt-outs and what are their NWA results? If they don't opt out, and NWA can give you a predictor on how they would do on the state test.
Potential achievement.
Right. So I think, you know, we can do that without really.
Yeah, without.
Maybe would that be of interest to the board?
So are NWA's like more, I guess, what are, do they do a better picture? Yours is state.
They have a correlation or like a predictor rate of like 70%. And it's a pretty, I mean, the strongest assessment I've seen to predict outcomes on the state assessments. They don't have a writing component. That's the only kind of footnote to it. But in terms of like math scores and reading scores, it's pretty negative. That's why we do, they really are useful. But we can, we can set that up. I mean, in years past, when I did that, it was like chopped out group was represented to the entire population. So it was like, yeah, but I'll be interested to see how it shows.
Don't let NWA compare myself to a similar school like Liberty? Isn't that how they do that? But it's all the fine print. You talk about comparing to schools like the store that you're at, so I'm just.
They give you comparative growth data, but it doesn't set it against another school. So in other words, it'll compare that student's growth from like fall to spring or spring to spring or fall to fall with how sixth graders did nationally in math. So it'll give you that data, but it won't, it won't just say New York State schools or schools of similar demographics.
Okay, so it's really just whoever took the NWA's throughout the whole nation.
Correct.
Any other questions for Linda on her update report? All right, moving on. Adriana?
I like the ready for motion to. For, actually, it's T1.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Great word, motion to.
To take as a group?
That's it, that's a play.
Can I have a second? Wendy, any discussion? All in favor?
I like the news that we approved, actually, one through T17, that's late.
Can I have a second? Lincoln? Any discussion? All in favor? So, word. Correspondence? There's none listed on that point. Questions, comments from the public? There's a clown in the audience? No presence in comments from the public. I believe the next meeting is a dinner meeting, pizza meeting. When Janet sends out her request to put your order in, please try to do that as soon as possible so she's not racing around trying to make our needs met late in the day, but she's also trying to prepare for our meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn made by Mr. Groden, seconded by Mrs. Holmes? Any discussion? All in favor?